Good.
It's got everything.
It'll be fun for Deb when she gets back.
Are we going on the, are we there?
We're there.
Awesome. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Let's please stand to the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we own our business that we have here. It states on the agenda that we're gonna do the election of the chairperson and vice-chairperson, but we're actually gonna flip it and we're going to do the oath of office for the new, for two new candidates, for two candidates that are coming in and our two selectmen. So Terry, could you please swear these?
Do you want to do them all together or do you want to do this?
However you feel it needs to be done.
One and done.
Yeah, why not, one and done.
Do you want us to get up and stand in front of you?
So if you all wanna come up, bring to my hand. Whichever one you want. We solemnly swear that you are faithfully and passionately distracted from performing the duties incumbent upon you, the holder of this office, to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws and the statute of the United States to help you out.
They should have to repeat it all back. Stayed after me.
Everybody swearing in.
I get to swear people, huh?
Hey Kevin, we started early tonight.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I can't reach it, the tallest one can do it. Troy's taller than me.
Father time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, now that the official swearing in has happened, we will now step on to, go back on the agenda which says the election of chairperson and vice-chairperson. That is when we elect the new positions here amongst the Board of Selectmen. So with that, I would like to nominate for chairperson, Selectman Byron.
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries, three, zero, one. I will now turn over the rightful chair to Mr. Selectman.
You can continue if you'd like.
Nope, it's all yours. Okay, so we'll open up nominations then for the vice-chair. Do we have nominations for a member to be vice-chair?
I nominate Brent Lamir.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. Any discussion on the nomination? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Do we wanna do appointments to the other? Was that the intention on this agenda?
Yeah, we need to do it now or do it at the end. We have to do it at some point, so.
Why don't we do it and we'll just move it down to the end? How's that sound?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is review of consent items. In the consent folder, we have the minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. The count payable manifest of three, one, sixteen, of one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, of March eighth, two thousand and sixteen, of eighty-six thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, and of March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, of twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. We have payroll manifests of three, three, sixteen, of thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, of three, ten, sixteen, of thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, of three, seventeen, sixteen, of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. We have several abatements. We have three that are being approved, as well as three that are being denied. We have a veteran's tax credit, we have two of those. And we also have an intent to cut, and we have two of those as well. Are there any items on the consent calendar that, excuse me, consent agenda? Consent calendar's another issue. Are there any items on the consent agenda that people wish to remove for later discussion and vote? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we approve the consent as read.
We have a motion by Mr. Brunella, a second by Mr. Bork. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Requests for other items or additional items or other business? Are there any requests for additional items to be added to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public input will occur approximately at six-thirty. First item for business is the police chief retirement. Troy, is that something that you wanna talk about or do you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the selectmen aware that the police chief has approached me and wanted to start a dialogue with the selectmen in regards to the amount of earned time he has accrued. At one point, some point in time, his contract will expire in year two thousand and eighteen. He's not sure if he's gonna be retiring at that time, but he certainly is eligible to retire. And he'd like to begin discussions with the Board of Selectmen on seeing if there's a way that we can address the amount of earned time that he has accrued. If there's a way that we can structure any payments to him to lessen the burden with the town over the next couple of years. So bring this to attention. See what the Board wishes to choose to do with it.
Okay, so where is the, the police chief has approached the selectmen regarding the earned time buyout, which he is entitled upon his retirement. I move that no more than two selectmen and Mr. Brown meet with the chief to discuss the details of the amount of time he has accrued in the timetable of the buyout, which is the town's best interests.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion on the motion.
Are we gonna discuss who's gonna do it?
What I was gonna do is take a vote on the motion and then appoint, not appoint, but then see what members of the Board would be interested in pursuing that.
Perfectly fine, that was what I was originally thinking, but I wanted to make sure we didn't wanna put it in.
Not a problem. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Now, which one of the selectmen would like to do that?
I don't have any problem doing it if you want me to.
Okay, Mr. Perry, anyone else?
I have no issue.
Excuse me?
I have no issue as well, so.
Wanna do that? Okay. So what I would suggest then is I'll make a motion that the Board appoints Mr. Perry and Mr. Bork, as well as Mr. Brown, to meet with the chief and to discuss the buyout of his time. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. So what we'd ask is that you periodically, as this goes through, report back to the Board and whenever you feel that you have something to bring to the Board, we go from there.
We will.
Oh, yeah. Wastewater feasibility study, next item on the agenda. Troy, anything on that?
Well, I've provided the Board with a copy. This is a draft, it's not been presented to the Board of Selectmen yet. As you know, before my time, the Board of Selectmen entered into a contract with CMA Engineers to do a wastewater feasibility study. This was just recently provided to us last week. CMA is willing to come in, present the information to the Board, provide you with an overview. I think that that would be wise to do and we probably should be inviting whoever you think for other boards and committees. Obviously, we'll give public notice to the general public. But I've kinda just, I've not completely read the entire report, but I think it is laid out real nicely, indicating that there are different options for the town. They're all, you know, got their pros and cons and whenever you're dealing with wastewater, it's an expensive proposition.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board on this? Would you like to have the CMA Engineers come in and present to the Board their information?
I would most definitely like to see them come in because I was just trying to remember how long ago it was when we actually contracted this.
This was probably late two thousand and fourteen when it was contracted.
That's what I was thinking.
Ten fourteen, it was a draft of this.
Well, those, I'm not sure whether that's their date or...
The thing that says draft, that's drafts of the agreements.
Right.
Something to do with the report.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Those are the agreements between Londonderry and Manchester.
So I would definitely like to see them come in and I think we should, we should extend this to anybody that feels like they wanna come in and listen. I mean, so whether we gotta do this at the school or we do it here, I mean, we might get some citizens, we might get some business, we might get department heads that wanna come. But I think it should be open to anybody that wants to hear it.
So I would suggest that we open that up to concerned, obviously, town departments, employees. Kevin, obviously, probably the planning board, Conservation Commission, mosquito control.
Yep. Yeah, I think you're right.
But we open up, and I would also invite any other or put some type of a notice out there to see if there's any members of the public who would want to attend to hear this as well. I think we can do it here, I'm guessing. We're not gonna have a huge turnout, I wouldn't think. So Troy, can you make arrangements as to when we can get them in here? It may not be able to be for the next meeting, but if we can do it in the next couple of meetings, that would be good. That could be them calling right now. So what I'd ask is the Board to take these studies, go over them, read them through, and we can provide feedback when they come in as to whether we'd like to see some changes or modifications to the reports, what have you. Do you know the status of the billing on this, by the way?
So everything's been paid. We only have an outstanding balance of about thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
And I think probably at this point in time, you know, I'm not going to pay that invoice until after the public presentation, formal acceptance from the Board.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'd get a final copy, I mean, there's still, this is a draft, so I think that's very reasonable.
Okay, anything else on that? Hearing none, how about next item, ambulance bills?
Okay, this is, this was brought up at your last meeting and there were some questions that were asked about the invoices, but just to recap, a few weeks ago, we received an invoice from the Town of Hudson for unpaid ambulance bills, an amount of eighteen thousand, forty-five dollars. These bills represented services that were provided as far back as two thousand and thirteen. We've paid this invoice, we're obligated to pay it. And as of right now, we have a balance in our revolving fund of five thousand, one forty-five. That's not counting, however, we calculate the default budget and how much money will be added to this fund based on, you know, the approved budget. The finance director, fire chief, myself, met with Hudson. I contacted the Hudson Town Administrator, told him that, you know, I was a little bit disappointed in having these being presented with bills that exceeded, you know, one or two years in collection. And we were able to have a meeting with the Town of Hudson officials, their finance director, their fire chief, and they had some Comstar representatives there. Comstar is the company they use for the third-party billing services. I thought the meeting went really well. They explained to us that the fire department had been going through some personnel changes and they'd been working for the past year on trying to clean up a lot of these bills. And they actually admitted that a lot of the back bills were basically due to the fire department, not so much Comstar. However, we did get a lesson in learning about how difficult it is for Comstar and the Town of Hudson to initially take a call, you collect all the data, you know, you send out the bills to insurance companies. If you know the insurance company, automobile insurance, sometimes you have missing addresses and it takes some time before, maybe several billings, before you actually start, you know, connect with the insurance companies or the individual that received the service. Hudson itself is having the same problem with having their uncollected services, the amount of uncollected services grow. They've had an amount that exceeded a hundred thousand dollars. And working with their auditors and they've developed, they've developed a policy internally where they can review these bills and they have several steps that they take, whether they're gonna pursue collection, if they decide that it's uncollectible and they have a process where they can write off that debt. And they're gonna share their policy with us. They just recently adopted this, it's been in place for less than a year and they think that this would be something that'd be really helpful for us, as you recall.
To do what, write off debt?
Well, yeah, it's their process that they use, 'cause they receive the same comments.
Because I wrote a policy for the town and gave it to you.
Right. Well, I have your policy that you drafted for me, but this one is very specific to the ambulance service. So I wanna take a look at that. And also Frank had provided the draft of a policy that would be cover town-wide, all uncollectible, outstanding receivables. As you recall, our auditors had made comments the last time they were before you and they were concerned about the amount of uncollected debt that we had and it needed to be dealt with. I think it was in the amount of about forty thousand dollars. So with all that being said, the positive of having the meeting was I thought we, it was good to meet with the different individuals that are involved. They promised that they were going to provide Karen with some additional information, so when she receives reports, she'll have more information where she can try to pursue collection. We're gonna meet with them on a quarterly basis, so it'll be Hudson personnel and Comstar personnel. And then we're gonna get their, their policy, we'll take a look at that and I'll be presenting something to this Board that will be trying to address how we, you know, deal with uncollectible bills.
Okay, because there was a discussion a while ago about taking some of this to court. I do know that Mr. Hope had discussions originally about the possibility of having small claims court for some of these and seeing if there was the option of doing something that way. I don't know where that went, so.
I was gonna say, I thought that part of the feedback we got from him and from Karen was the amount of effort involved wasn't worth the return.
Could be. I don't recollect, to be honest. Okay? So you stated a number, Troy, of five thousand dollars, which is in the ambulance bad, I'll call it bad debt account, whatever? That's after paying this?
That's after paying this invoice. So we have five thousand dollars remaining right now. Karen has letters out to all the, about fifty different claims and she is actually receiving some activity there. She's received two payments, she's got a half dozen people, I think, agreeing to some payment plans. However, with that being said, the end result, we'll be lucky if we'll really collect more than five to eight percent of that eighteen thousand dollars.
Right. Okay.
Let's be optimistic. Let's hope we get more.
We're only gonna have outstanding five to eight percent, right?
Right. That's really optimistic.
You have to stay here, else we'll...
He's in the hallway.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on ambulance, ambulance bills? None? Okay. Next item, administrator report. Troy?
I believe you received an email. I've sent email out to Conservation Commission, the Rec Commission. Richard Husband, resident here in town, gonna be changing out his dock, his wooden dock to an aluminum docking system. And he's asked if the town has any interest and he would be willing to donate this to the town if we're, you know, have any interest in receiving it. At this point in time, I, like I said, I've reached out to Conservation Commission and Rec Commission to see what, any comments they had. The chairman of the Rec Commission asked me to contact our insurance company to see if there's, if we did accept it, if we have coverage, if we, you know, increase our cost or what have you. So I have sent that email and not received a response back, but I'll keep you posted on that. Some point in time, I guess, you know, the, a final response to Mr. Husband would have to come from the Board of Selectmen.
But there's no way we can make a determination tonight, right?
Right, I just wanted to make you aware. Also, I'm working with New Hampshire DES, they're trying to schedule an informational meeting regarding some of the groundwater concerns for the St. Goblin Factory over in Merrimack. I think some of you may have heard of the concerns. The test results, what I've heard, the test results that they've collected so far do not exceed EPA standards, but they are continuing to collect at other sites. So as part of their outreach, they want to hold a informational meeting here in Litchfield. I think they'll be doing them as well as in Merrimack and other towns. Mosquito contract is coming up, I'm receipt of that and I've forwarded it to the mosquito district committee for their review and input. I expect to hear something back from them, they're gonna be meeting this week. And then, as you mentioned earlier this evening, about the annual appointments of committee members, the process, I wanted to talk to the Board about that. The process for that in the past has been, I would assume that I'll reach out to the committee chairs, make them aware of the committee members that their appointments are to expire and have those chairs contact those members, make sure they wanna be reappointed or...
The normal...
How does that normally work?
Yeah, that is relatively the way it happens. And then we need to have an affirmative vote of the committees that they want those individuals reappointed. So that usually comes to the Board of Selectmen. Now, it's also understood that, I believe, under state law, those committee members serve until replaced, so.
That's correct. So that's good, so I'll make sure that when I communicate with them, that, you know, the selectmen are looking for a committee vote for a recommendation coming back to you.
Okay.
House Bill thirteen fifty-two will be up in Concord Wednesday with Representative Mr. Byron. This is the House bill that Frank sponsored in response to the penalty that was assessed against the town when we incorrectly reported the New Hampshire State Retirement wages. Those penalties, the fine was eventually waived, but we're still trying to make sure we get the law clarified so that it doesn't occur to other communities, which we learn, what, there were about a half dozen other communities that faced fines of as much as three thousand dollars, so it's worthwhile to make sure you can get this thing cleared up. And then Thursday, there'll be another pipeline meeting in Brookline that I'll be attending.
How are they doing with that?
Well, it's, you know, I first started working here, I think, you know, I was all new to the process. But I've noticed in the last two months that we're actually starting to make some progress, meaning that their attorney that we have, he's coming to our meetings. Really, we're starting, as I can understand, he's starting to put together his case. I think everything starts this year, really waiting for Kendra Morgan to file with the State Review Committee. No one knows when that's gonna happen, it should be happening anytime.
Well, there's been a couple bills in the House that have been approved. Some of them were defeated, but a couple that were approved that could have an influence on that. Now they go to the Senate and they'll have to see what happens. There might be something, Troy, that you wanna talk to the committee about, not this chair, but I mean, the pipeline committee and see if they're gonna have representative there to discuss some of those bills as to how they would impact.
Yeah.
Any idea of the other towns' results in getting their money to do the provision?
All the towns, it appears that all the towns were able to appropriate the funding. There was one small town, Winchester, that their article failed. So that would be a loss of ten thousand dollars, 'cause all the towns were gonna, at a minimum, contribute ten thousand. And then I think their contribution above the ten thousand dollars was five hundred dollars, something like that. There's still discussion, I hear from the committee chair, of Amherst and Merrimack possibly participating in some capacity. And even, there's some talk about Windham.
Anything else? Any questions for the administrator? Nope?
The only item I have, and probably you folks are gonna bring it up, with the vote last week of our operating budget being a default budget, I've assumed I'll work with Chairman Byron and I'm not sure what the process is, but bringing something back to this Board at our next meeting.
What I was gonna do is I was gonna bring this up a little bit later, but what I would, I would like to see is that we, of course, are working under the default budget, so we have to make that default budget work and that may require us to move various funds and monies around to cover certain aspects of the town's operating expenses. So usually, in the past, what's happened is the town administrator would take and take a first stab at trying to do that, then bring that to the Board and try and present that to the Board, we can go over and review that and then give you any feedback and then we try and finalize it maybe at the next meeting after that. So if that's something you can do, take a first stab at, we can sit down and then discuss it, then we'll bring it to the Board at one of our next meetings and then finalize it so that we can put that into the budget so the departments know what they're working with. And if you wanna make your life easier, go beyond the amount that we need to save, so just in case a few things get switched out along the way, you've already got them thought out.
Yeah, the one, you know, and I've talked to Jason Hope today, or exchanged emails, just trying to understand the default budget, the way I understand it right now is, is a bottom line.
Correct.
So we have the right to move dollar amounts within departments, within lines, within departments.
So for example, if we feel that there is a need, a shortfall in one department that we've gotta cover and we've had a light winter, we could potentially use a transfer over from, say, Highway to that department, and I'm just picking an example. But yes, the selectmen have the authority to move the budget monies around the line items as needed to equal the bottom line that's been given to us by the citizens.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Karen and I started looking at it a little bit today and initially, we thought, nah, it's not gonna be that difficult, but then we started, started playing with some numbers and realized it's not, it's not gonna be an easy task. It's a small amount, you know, sixty-six thousand dollars. It's a small amount, you know, sixty-six thousand dollars, but still, it's not going to be an easy task.
Okay. Any other questions or anything else on the administrator report? So, let's go through selectmen reports, any reports selectmen have?
The last planning board meeting, question came up about the wastewater feasibility study, and the other question came up, because they were wondering if this report was done so it could be added to the CIP, and they were also, there was another discussion that happened about NRPC, that they like to update road plans and projected road projects and things like that, and sometimes there's grant monies, and sometimes there's just funding that they can help towns get to, to do projects, so I had reached out, I had told Jen to reach out to Troy, and I reached out to Troy as well, and one of the questions that I thought was, we had that preliminary engineering done on Cutler Road, is that something that the board would have interest in giving to NRPC as just a, hey, I mean, this is something the town has looked at, not necessarily, and it doesn't need to be an Iocla plant, it just needs to be, hey, this is something that the town was thinking of.
You're talking about the plan to extend Albuquerque?
To extend Albuquerque, and then to also maybe get rid of the turn and try to do a light or something in that vicinity there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
So, that was, has Jen talked to you about that yet?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that happened at the planning board meeting, they have another meeting tomorrow night, and if my recollection is right, they have a public hearing, and they also have a conceptual review for a multifamily.
Anything else, Steve?
That's it.
Anybody else have any reports?
Nothing from me.
Okay. As far as Budget Committee goes, Budget Committee's not gotten together since, I think, before the, well, since right after deliberative, so that's about it, so... No items have been removed from consent. Other business, let's go over committee assignments. So we have a bunch of committee assignments that are available. I don't want everybody jumping at the, the chance.
I'll keep on rec, thank you. Putting everybody, yeah.
So, so, let's talk first about Budget Committee. Who wants to spend their time with Budget Committee?
What is a, a normal budget season, what is it, Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Budget Committee generally meets during the summer months and into the fall, about once, once a month, starting in September timeframe. They'll start meeting every week, usually on Thursday nights, and then going from Thursday night sometime maybe in November, they may start meeting twice a week, and then that will, that will last until...
Budget this year, one a month.
You want to do it?
Yeah, I would do it.
Okay, so we'll have...
It's a task I've never taken on.
That's fine.
That's fine, not a problem. So, we'll, we'll have, we'll have Kevin doing Budget Committee, Recreation, John wants to do Recreation, Planning Board?
I want Recreation.
Yeah, I already got it.
You guys want to arm wrestle?
I, I can do Planning again.
Do you want to do Planning?
Do you want to do it?
No.
Do you want to do it?
Okay, and what else are we going to do? Mosquito control, you want to do mosquito control?
There's no Conservation, which Brent's on.
Conservation.
Brent says Conservation, I mean, I think it's safe to give him that again.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay, what else is there?
That's him, right?
I don't think there's anything else that I can think of.
There's no de facto for zoning board, there's no de facto for mosquito.
Right.
It's a cable, well, we don't really have it anymore, that's not there. If we, I know we got, one of the things that we need to do is get the CIP process going, was that a process that you've already had a selectman assigned to, or?
CIP process going, go ahead and tell me what you're expecting to see out of that.
Well, I, we need to have plans, right?
The Board of Selectmen will handle the CIP process.
Right, so it's already started.
So it's, okay. So it's a plan that, you know...
Hang on a second, oh yeah, it's already started, it's been turned over to the town, to the town administrator, because there's a spreadsheet, maybe we got to find it, but there was a lot of work put in through some citizens and the committee to get all this stuff together, and there's a, there's a, there's a whole five-year, ten-year, you know, here's our capital assets, here's the projects associated with it, that's supposed to be used, be fed into the CIP program.
Right.
Question is, where is that at?
Because the Planning Board used to do it.
No, I know, but there, there was a vote of the citizens to have us have more input to it, I guess, is how I guess I described it.
Right. So that's one of the things I know Jen keeps asking me for as a...
It's actually a joint committee between selectmen, say, police, fire.
Right. So that data is already there, and so if the, if the Planning Board's getting ready to do it, then that, we probably get a...
We don't do it.
The Planning Board is getting ready to start thinking about it, and they're planning, we should...
Planning Board doesn't do it anymore. Yeah, Planning Board doesn't do it anymore.
Right. But, so we need to make sure we adopt, you know, update it and adopt it once a year.
It was updated just before Jason left, well, just before Jason left.
All right, so here's my issue, and here's the reason why I said I want to know what you're looking for. We don't use a CIP the way we should.
I know.
Because we don't budget for it, we don't put money aside, we don't, it's really a booklet of paper with information on it that we don't use.
Yeah, but didn't we used to use, if we had it in the CIP, it was also our ability to tap into the, the...
Impact fees.
Right, it's, you got to have a cost basis of the impact fees, and that's all it is. But the problem is that money doesn't even get allocated for what it's going to go to.
Yep.
The issue that I have with the CIP is that...
You're not talking, in talking impact fees, you're talking, what do you say, money, you're talking appropriated money.
Exactly. Because my issue with the CIP is, towns like Pelham are one of the towns that really use it to its fullest benefit. They look at it and say, okay, we need to purchase a fire truck, let's just say they needed three fire trucks over the next ten years...
And they stop funding it.
They say, we need to stop putting a hundred grand a year away.
Yeah, and that's what we should be doing too.
So, I'll make a motion that Mr. Perry is now the CIP chair.
No.
No.
Was that a real, I heard a second.
I don't know, it looked like it was going to carry.
No, but I think Steve raised a really good point, and we need to figure out how to fund it, and we haven't been able to fund it, we haven't even tried.
Well, first, first off, I think we need to have the plan, you need to have the plan fleshed out, and then what you do is you take the plan and you set up, it, it's not just a list of projects, it also should be a list of how you're going to start to manage those projects. For example, if you've got a project that's going to be due in 2020, to Steve's point, and you know it's going to be a large project, going to require a lot of money, such as a, a new fire station or whatever the case may be, you may back that up five years and say, okay, we're going to take little chunks every year and go forward with it from there.
And you, I mean, let's just take it from...
That's what's missing from the CIP.
And, and not to pick on anybody, let's just say we needed a new transfer station, we needed to build a new building or something like that. If you needed a half a million dollars to do it right, I don't care if you put twenty-five grand away, and five years later you say, hey, at least we got a buck and a quarter to drop down on it, it's a start. And I think we need to think that way, because otherwise, you're going to go to voting, and you're going to look at a ballot, and you're going to say, how much is this going to cost me?
So here it is, I just, it's, it's, it's in the drill, in the drive, it's called capital items, and this was, this is, this is what was originally put together, the inventory, it's somewhere, it's in somewhere.
That looks pretty blank to me, John.
Yeah, hang on, it's right there. But anyway, it gives, it gives the estimated cost of replacement, the years in which they believe to be replaced, need to be replaced, and that's, what we haven't done at this point is, okay, how are we going to do that, right? Because to your point, when it breaks, we're going to go replace it, and we won't have the money.
So...
So I think a lot of data is there, it's how we formalize it, right?
I'll, I'm willing to serve as somehow on the capital committee, and we'll do that. And what I'd ask you to do, Troy, is pull that document, just familiarize yourself with it, and then we can sit down and talk about it, if that makes sense to the board, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it makes sense.
Okay.
I think something has to be done to try to set up a fund or a mechanism to actually get it to be feasible, because without the money, it's just a document that, oh yeah, yeah, well, we were supposed, we were supposed to replace this four years ago.
Right. Yeah, that's, this is what I was talking about, that's, that's all the work we put in back when we really pulled it together, but the funding's not there.
Well, and there's probably no, no, there may need to be some more program details fleshed out as well.
Well, and I think the other thing too, is this focuses a lot on our capital assets, not necessarily improvement projects, like roadways or any of that kind of thing. It was really about how do we deal with the stuff that we own today that is going to be aging out, basically, and we have, unfortunately, we have a lot of it that's aging out.
I'd also like to suggest that on this, we're talking about committee assignments, that we appoint Mr. Lemire as an alternate for Kevin on Budget Committee, so that if Kevin can't make it, we have somebody already identified who can make it. Is that okay with you, Kevin?
Yeah.
Have you cleared that by Brent, or we just assume?
No.
That's what he, that's what he gets for not being here.
No, I think he did it, and he typically says he'd, he likes to be the back member.
Doesn't he usually back you?
Excuse me?
Doesn't he usually back you?
Yeah, well, you did once, I think, last year, once or twice, but that's fine. Okay, any other committees we're missing, anybody can think of? If not, I'll make a motion that the appointments to the committees we just discussed hereby finalized or whatever.
Sorry.
Discussion. All those, Davis, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Troy, if you can just make, put a list together of that, and then maybe send that out to the appropriate chairs and stuff like that, that'd work. Any, there's no members of the public here, so I'll close public input. Any other business that the board needs to discuss tonight? Hearing none, I see that there's a request for a non-public, is that still?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have a non-public meeting under RSA, I'll make a motion to go into a non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three, Roman two C for reputation, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Bork?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Byron says yes, Mr. Brunell?
Yes.
So, the vote was four zero zero to go into a non-public session, the only thing we will be doing to come out of non-public session will be to adjourn. Our next meeting is March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, seven PM here at the Town Hall. Other than that, everyone have a good evening.
Forty-five minutes, good.